I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to also thank Congresswoman Susan Wild for taking time from her very busy schedule to be with all of us this evening. Congresswoman Susan Wild has been a member of the Lehigh Valley community for more than 30 years. Her two adult children were born and raised in the valley where they attended public schools. Congresswoman Wild built a successful legal practice while raising her two children and became the first woman to be appointed as Allentown City Solicitor. In November 2018, Congresswoman Wild was elected as the first woman to represent Pennsylvania's 7th congressional district in the U.S. House of Representatives. Congresswoman Wild has been appointed to the House Education and Labor Committee, the House Ethics Committee, and the House Foreign Affairs Committee. She is committed to fighting for quality, affordable health care for all and an economy that benefits every member of our community and reforming our political system to return government to the American people. Please join me in welcoming Congresswoman Susan Wild. Okay, we'll begin with the first question. Why have you not come out before?
Dr. Bieber, can I go? I'm so sorry. Before we start with questions, I just wanted to make a couple of introductory remarks if that's okay with you. And then we'll get right into the questions that you've got. Dr. Bieber, I believe, is going to read the questions. If anybody hasn't gotten a slip to write out a question, there will be people circulating to pick them up. I just wanted to start by thanking all of you for being here. You know, I really am a firm believer that our democracy does not work unless citizens are heard. And when I was on the campaign trail, I made a promise that we have been fulfilling, which is to have very regular town halls. We've had one every month since I was elected. And I really treasure these opportunities to hear from all of you. We hear from people every single day by email, by phone, and so forth. But it's really nice to be on the ground face-to-face with constituents from the 7th District and hear what your concerns are. I will answer questions specifically, but I did just want to give you a little bit of information about the kinds of things I've been working on. Dr. Bieber's already told you the committees that I'm on. But I will tell you that my principal focus of those committees is education and labor. And I'm not just saying that because I happen to be in one of the finest community colleges in the country, standing next to Dr. Bieber. I was given my choice of committees, and my first choice was education and labor because I feel that it's such an important committee dealing with what I call the intersection of education and labor and getting our youth trained for the jobs of the future and making sure that we are not losing sight of what skills they will need later in life to be successful. I'm also very happy to tell you that I have introduced nine bills. I'll talk about those at some point. Three of those bills have passed, one dealing with the cost of health care premiums, one dealing with a law for early voting across the country in federal elections, and the third one, I'm going to forget what it is, but I'll come back to it in my remarks. And I've also led several letters on a variety of issues which I'll also talk about. So with that, I'm going to stop talking so that we can get to the important questions, and I really thank you all for being here.
Congresswoman, why have you not come out for impeachment?
All right. I'm glad that question was asked. I would have addressed it even if I hadn't been, but I'm still certain that it would be raised. There is, you know, I get messages every single day from people, many asking me why I have not come out in favor of impeachment, many urging me not to. I will tell you that my decision not to come out for impeachment at this point is based on my own decision and a process of what I consider to be very deliberative thinking. Any of you who ever heard me on the campaign trail heard me say that I'm not one to jump on a bandwagon on any issue. And I'm not suggesting that the people who have come out in favor of impeachment are jumping on a bandwagon. But for me, it came down to this. I spent 30 years as a litigator, going to court triumph cases. And during, I learned a few things in 30 years. And one of the things that I learned over the years was, and not surprisingly, that you don't want to go to court. You don't want to try a case if you're not well-prepared. You don't want to try a case where the facts are not all lined up and you're ready with all of your evidence that you're going to introduce. I don't believe we are there at this point in time. And that's why I have not come out to say that I think that we should be moving forward with impeachment. You are well aware, I'm sure, that investigations are being undertaken by some of my colleagues on the Judiciary Committee and the Oversight Committee and the Intelligence Committee. I'm not a member of any of those. I tend to spend my time dealing with what some people would call more mundane issues. I call them really important issues that affect the lives every day of working Americans and retired Americans. So that's the answer to the question of why I haven't come out for it. The other thing I will say is this, and I don't rule out eventually either coming out for it or voting for it if I am satisfied that the evidence is there and that it's something that I should be in favor of. I'm just not there yet. And, you know, it's a personal decision. It's a very difficult decision because, believe me, I've been lobbied both ways. But the one thing I want to say in closing is I do feel that the most important job of Congress is to make sure that our democracy is continued and to make sure that we are fulfilling our responsibilities. I firmly believe in Congress's oversight role of the administration. And I absolutely believe that we are doing that and that the people who have taken on those investigations are taking on that obligation. I watch what they, the evidence that they come up with, I watch what they decide to do. I don't always agree with them, but that's my answer.
Thank you. How can we stop the toxic politics and attacks and center both parties to addressing the people's agenda?
Well, that's another really good question. If anybody didn't hear the question, look over your hand, but hopefully you all did since we're using microphones. And that actually sort of tags onto the prior question. What I was going to say, but I was already talking too long, is I feel like we are already living in a terribly divided society. And it's very discouraging to me. I grew up in the 1960s and '70s and 62-years-old. I don't make any bones about it. And so I remember times when we were able to respectfully disagree with our elected officials. I am the product of a father who was conservative and a mother who was probably the original bleeding-heart liberal. And they talked about politics every single night, even before the advent of cable news. But I remember very distinctly that they were able to have civilized conversations, not just with one another, but with other people and that they were able to engage in debate without it getting personal. And I will tell you, as an elected official, things do get personal. And it's discouraging. It's not, I have a pretty thick skin after all these years. But it's very troubling to me that people feel the need to resort to personal attacks among one another or to disagree with somebody in such a way that it's actually showing a complete and utter lack of respect. So the question was, what can we do about it? Let me just say this, that there are a whole bunch of freshman Congress people, men and women, who come from districts like mine. The majority of us who are freshmen come from districts that are very moderate, that are what I call purple, almost an even number of Republicans and Democrats. And we are well aware of the need to act in a civilized manner and to work with people across the aisle. I spend as much time as possible getting to know my colleagues on the other side of the aisle. It's not hard for me to get to know the rest of the Democratic Caucus. But you have to make an actual effort to go meet people on the other side, and that's what I do. And I'm pleased, I can't find common ground with all of them, but I can find common ground with some of them. And those are the issues that I try to work on. And I think we need a lot more of that. And I think that every person in this room and every person in the country should be demanding decency and respect from their elected officials.
What is your position on gun safety?
Okay, so there's been a little bit about guns in the news lately. I guess that's been for quite a while. Let me say this. First and foremost, I am a strong believer in the United States Constitution. And I do believe in the Second Amendment. And I do believe that we should allow law-abiding citizens to own guns and that they are entitled to under the terms of our Constitution. But what we have to do is get control of the problem that we now have, which is guns in the hands of people who shouldn't own guns. And, you know, it's interesting because I've had a number of conversations with experts around the country on the issue of guns. And it's been pointed out to me that while what we really focus on and what cable news loves to talk about are mass shootings, and of course, they're horrible. There's nobody in this room that doesn't get upset when we learn of a mass shooting somewhere. But there is gun violence on a daily basis in homes, domestic violence situations, in communities that doesn't make the news necessarily. And that's what I think we really need to focus on. And I'm not suggesting that we don't focus on the issue of mass shootings. But the reality of the matter is that even though those are the ones that we hear about the most, the daily surge of gun violence is what I think we really need to focus on. So you're probably aware that the House of Representatives passed the background check bill. We also closed the Charleston loophole by, and Charleston loophole was the one that allowed Dylan Roof to obtain guns before his background check had come back. And so that's a start, but I don't think that's the be-all and end-all of what we need to do. I honestly believe that we need to study gun violence in this country. We need to learn where it comes from, who's committing it, what is wrong with these people, and then figure out common sense solutions that don't infringe on the rights of law-abiding citizens.
Instead of attacking the NRA, why don't we ask them to come to the table to be a part of the solution instead of adding to the problem?
Well, that's a really interesting question. And, you know, the gun lobby in this country is fairly strong, but there are a number of strong lobbies in this country, including pharmaceuticals and so forth. So I don't single out the NRA or the gun lobby. But I have, you know, I would love to see the NRA come to the table and engage in common sense, reasonable discussions. And it's just another example of how divided we've become. You know, we, my understanding from studies is that about 97% of Americans believe in background checks. And yet the NRA still hasn't endorsed that concept, and I find that surprising. So I would like to see that happen.
Can the President pull $155 million from FEMA to build the wall knowing that a hurricane disaster is possible in the very near future?
So now we're getting into current events. Hurricane, what is it, Dorian, I think, is bearing down or has lead landfall. I followed it this evening. The answer to that question is that I don't believe the President has the authority to pull money from disaster relief from FEMA to apply it to border wall. There's a process called appropriations. We spent a long time on appropriations in Congress, and we make a lot of compromises. There were compromises made very recently about supplemental appropriations to go to the border for both humanitarian assistance but also for law enforcement assistance and for the President to circumvent that by taking money that was specifically allocated for disaster relief, especially at a time when here we are with a disaster potentially bearing down us. From what I hear, I don't think Hurricane Dorian is going to be anything on the order of Hurricane Maria or one of the other really bad ones. But this, I think it's entirely inappropriate and the timing is really unfortunate.
Do we know who the operators of the private ICE detention centers are and where does the money go?
The private detention centers have names. I can't name them for you by name, but they are entities that are privately owned, that are subcontracted by the government at the cost of about $750 per day per detainee. I think that's a ridiculous waste of taxpayer money, first of all. But secondly, I don't think that we should be outsourcing that kind of activity to private contractors. My problem with that is that the private contractors have no incentive to do anything other than essentially collect their checks. There are better ways of running detention centers, and I don't think that we should be in the business of enriching private companies' pockets for this purpose.
Is it true that Donald Trump's bank was cosigned by Russian oligarchs?
I have to confess, I do not know the answer to that question. But if there's contact information on there, I'll try to find it and get back to the person who asked the question.
How can the U.S. do more to support vocational and technical education?
Well, thank you for that question, whoever asked it. One of my greatest interests since I've been in Congress is exactly this topic. Because what I have learned, amazingly, you think at a certain point in your life you can't learn a whole lot of new stuff. Well, I have, let me tell you. In eight or 10 months, I've learned an awful lot. And what I've learned when I come back to the district right here, and I go around every time I'm home and I visit manufacturers, I visit employers, I'm really interested in understanding more about the manufacturing that keeps the economy in this area going. And of course, we are originally the center of manufacturing in the form of Mack trucks and Bedsteel. What I hear from almost every employer is, "We can't find enough employees." So I guess that's a good problem in the sense that we have very, very low unemployment. That's not such a bad problem. But we are leaving money on the table. We are leaving GDP on the table. We are leaving, we are unable to fulfill orders for customers because of a shortage of workers. So with that said, I have spent, since I've learned this, I have spent a lot of my time and attention on what can we do to build up more technical schools, to bring technical schools to the people who are available as potential workers. LCTI is such a, I hear it from every manufacturer, how much they just love LCTI. I hear a lot of good things about North Hampton Community College and this college and the programs that they offer. But clearly, we are not graduating enough of these people. We have a need for more. So one of the ideas that I've been talking about with some folks in downtown Allentown who have the resources to help make it happen is how do we put a comprehensive vocational training school right in downtown Allentown, which is one of the few areas in our district with a high rate of unemployment? How do we, and the problem is, you might say, "Well, why don't they go to LCTI?" Or "Why don't they go to North Hampton?" And the answer, unfortunately, often is lack of transportation. We don't have particularly great public transportation. I think Lantin does a good job, but they've got a very small budget and we just can't get enough people moved around. And if you don't live, if you don't have a car, this is a very tough community to live in. So I think what we do is we need to invest in vocational training. We need to make sure, you know, there's a lot of talk, in case you haven't noticed, by Democratic presidential candidates about free college for all. That's not my thing. My thing is, let's make vocational and technical training much more affordable, much more attractive. And the other thing we need to do is start at a much younger age. A lot of people are being encouraged, a lot of youth are being encouraged to go to college when perhaps that's not really where their interest lies. They should be encouraged, if they get, to pursue the trades and to see it as an honorable and respectable line of work. Trade work is not what it used to be. It's very sophisticated work, and it pays very well. And we could alleviate a lot of student loan debt problem if we were doing more to put people into apprentice programs where they're working while they go to school, they graduate with a job that pays a good amount of money and without that big load of student loan debt.
Should we be concerned about the failing of the Federal Election Committee? What can be done to fix it, to secure our elections?
I'm not sure if the question refers to the fact that we just lost an appointee on the Federal Election Commission, which basically means that it has been rendered ineffective because they can't act on any complaints or problems. Yes, we should be concerned about it. We know that there was tampering with our last election. We know that we have, from time to time, had problems with candidates in the election cycles. And we must have an oversight department, agency, that deals with that. So the answer is yes, we should be concerned with it. I'm not, I haven't heard anything about a potential replacement, although I knew this was a very recent announcement, so it's possible that there will be. But I think it's very important that we feel.
What more could the Democratic Caucus be doing to preserve the environment?
Okay, that's a good question, too. So I don't think it's just the Democratic Caucus. I think we all need to be working on protecting our environment. And frankly, at this point, it's not a matter of protecting our environment. It's about doing some restorative and repair work on our environment. And the reason I say I think we all should be, you know, the environment used to be a very bipartisan issue. The EPA was established under Richard Nixon. And in this area, in the Lehigh Valley of Pennsylvania, I find people on both sides of the aisle very, very concerned with preserving our natural habitat, our waterways, keeping our water clean, keeping our air clean. And so I think we all need to be working on it. I will tell you that I have signed on to, and I'm going to look at a couple of my notes here because I don't remember all of them. We have introduced, some of these have been passed, some have just been introduced. But I just want to give you an idea of some of the things I've been working on in the climate and environmental space, so to speak. We passed H.R. 9, which was the bill for the United States to rejoin the Paris Climate Court. I think that, I think that's a very important first step. I am encouraged by the fact that even though the President announced that we would be terminating that agreement, that most municipalities and corporations have endeavored to actually comply with the principles of the Paris Climate Court, which I think is very indicative that not only cannot be done, but that it's recognized by manufacturing facilities and municipalities that it must be done. One of the things I've been most impressed by when I visit these different employers and manufacturers around the 7th District is the efforts that they have made to improve their buildings, to incorporate green space, to make sure that they are not discharging pollutants. There are some that do, and we might be talking about that tonight. But by and large, they have gone to great lengths to tell me about their efforts to make sure that they are not harming the environment. And I want to see that continue to happen. I only got to the first one. H.R. 4148 is the Green Jobs and Opportunity Act that I signed on to that actually is a bill to make sure that we are addressing current and future trends and shortages within the clean energy technology industry with the assumption of achieving a clean energy economy by 2050. The Climate and Health Protection Act, which I signed on to, is a rather unfortunate one, actually, because it is dedicated to helping state and local governments prepare for the health consequences of climate change, some of which have already occurred, unfortunately, and that's why I said it's an unfortunate bill. The Carbon Capture Prize Act is a bill directed at the Department of Energy to create a prize competition to actually incentivize research and development. And it goes on and on. PFAS, I know a number of people in our district are very, very concerned about PFAS. The H.R. 2577 is the PFAS Right to Know Act, which would include PFAS on the toxic chemical list, which already contains 595 individually listed chemicals and would make it possible to alert communities that are exposed to PFAS. And there are a number of others that I'm happy to share with you. I don't want to take the whole, the whole time talking about this, but suffice to say there are at least more than a dozen here that we have introduced and or passed in the House.
Thank you. How seriously do you take your fellow representatives on the consequences of increasing carbon dioxide in the atmosphere? Realistically, what can be done about it?
How seriously do I take my fellow representatives on the issue of, well, as I said, I take my representative, my fellow representatives very seriously on most issues that they care about. I'm going to, I'm not sure I understand that question, but I will say that we have to always be working to improve in that area.
Okay. What are you doing about the ethylene oxide pollution being emitted by Brawn?
Well, that's one of the ones that I was referring to just a moment ago. And so let me talk to you a little bit about that. Some of you are aware of some news articles that came out in the Morning Call about emissions from Brawn and concerns about cancer rates in the community. So let me tell you what I know about it and what I've done. Before that, I became aware of that situation, actually, before the Morning Call series came out. I was alerted to it by a constituent. And I like to think that we are very, very responsive to our constituents' concerns, and we followed up on that. And what we learned was that Brawn was technically emitting less than the permitted amount, but that the regulations for that had not been changed in many, many years, hadn't even been reviewed by the EPA. So we wrote a letter to the CDC in February, before the Morning Call article came out, and asked for a study to be done of our district and the EEO emissions and what the levels were. We got a response that I thought was inadequate, so we have followed up with an additional request and asked for that information as quickly as possible. I also was recently at Brawn. It was originally scheduled, as with many of my tours, just as a visit, to see what they do, to meet their employees, to see the different departments. But while I was there, I specifically asked them about this issue. I was told, and I'm not vouching for it, I'm just telling you what I was told, that they had already begun a process of voluntarily reducing these emissions before these articles came out. They, I've also been told, and it was recorded in the Morning Call, that there is no alternative to the way that certain medical instruments, which of course is the business of Brawn, the way they are sterilized requires the use of this chemical, which in turn results in the admission discharge. I think it's very, I don't feel that I have enough answers yet. We will be pursuing that issue. I'd like to know, are there any alternatives to sterilization of the medical instruments? You know, we have new technologies that are created every single day. So that's number one. Number two, I'd like to see the EPA review the allowable amount of emissions and consider and study it in conjunction with the CDC, the Center for Disease Control, to see whether we do, in fact, have increased rates of cancers in the area and to adjust the emissions, the allowable emissions accordingly. So I'm very much aware of the issue. We are on top of it.
Do you have any background papers about pharmaceutical companies and the cost of medicine and drugs?
So this is one of my favorite topics, and not for a good reason. And I don't think I'm telling anybody in this room anything not, but when I say we are all paying too damn much for our prescription medications. If you're fortunate enough to have a really good insurance plan, maybe you're only paying a co-pay. a co-pay of $30. But the fact of the matter is, we know this, there are two pharmaceutical lobbyists for every single member of Congress. Think about that. It is, the pharmaceutical industry is the number one reason why I made the decision that I would not accept direct corporate PAC money, because I have seen personally, because I look at other people's financial reports, that the pharmaceutical industry is very, very generous with politicians. I recently signed on, I led a letter about the USMCA, which had, we'll get to that in a minute, had to do with pharmaceuticals. And even though I don't take their money, I received a number of telephone calls in my office from pharmaceuticals asking us to abandon this letter that had to do with pharmaceutical monopolies. So it is a huge problem. We know, first of all, insulin is a major, major problem in this district and across the country. We know that manufacturers could still make a profit on insulin if they charged as little as $11 a month for insulin. And yet, most people are paying hundreds, if not thousands, of dollars for their insulin. I have heard, if you ask me to group together all of the different kinds of inquiries that I get, the number one thing I hear about is people who ration their medication, and it's almost always insulin. Always, sometimes it's chemotherapy drugs, but insulin is right up there. And it's heartbreaking. I've talked to people who have lost children because they had juvenile diabetes and they couldn't afford to take their insulin properly. So this is, in my view, quite possibly one of our number one health problems in the United States. It's got to be dealt with, we've got to get, and I'll tell you some of the things that we've worked on that would help in this space. One is, there is a bill that we have signed on to that would facilitate the entry of biosimilar, otherwise known as generic drugs, into the market. It is very, very difficult to get a generic drug approved for entry into the market. That's number one. Number two, I think our monopoly protection for patents, pharmaceutical patents, is too long. Don't get me wrong, I think the R and D, the research and development that pharmaceutical companies do in this country is remarkable and marvelous. But the fact of the matter is that we, in this country, are essentially subsidizing the rest of the world, because they are not paying for pharmaceuticals what we do, because all the research and development is being paid for by us. And then, thirdly, I believe that pharmaceutical companies have to be more transparent. When they request, or when they impose, I should say, a price hike, it should be required to be accompanied by justification. Why is a price hike necessary? What did you do? Is there a new formula? Did it require, you know, 10 years of research and development, and you're trying to recoup that investment? Or, in the case of insulin, the formula for insulin has not changed in any way since the 1990s, and yet the price keeps going up, so.
Student loans are out of control. How can you fix this?
Okay, so we're done with the easy questions. Well, I mentioned before that I think too many people are being pushed into college. That's number one. It is a sad situation when somebody goes to college, lasts a couple of years, decides this isn't for them, and leaves and goes on to do something else, whether it might be in the trades or otherwise, but is saddled with a couple of years' worth of student loan debt that hasn't done them any good. Now, I'm a big believer in higher education, but higher education, to me, can be in many different forms. It does not have to be a two-year degree or a four-year degree. So that's number one. But number two, we have to give our students the ability to borrow money, as we do, for our mortgages, for instance. They pay more in their interest rate for student loans than most of us are paying on mortgages. That, to me, and they are the segment of the population the least able to deal with it. Some of them are paying higher student loan rates than we do for our automobile loans. So we need to give them the ability to renegotiate their loans. We need, at the onset, when they're taking out their loans, there needs to be more transparency, and there needs to be some form of counseling that explains to them exactly what they are taking on, and how much their payments are going to be. And the fact that it won't be able to be renegotiated unless, of course, we manage to pass something that allows them to do so. Interest rates must be lower on student loans. And, you know, and we've got to have some sort of program for student loan forgiveness. People who go into certain fields should be able to receive some sort of forgiveness, whether it be public service that they go into, or nurses in rural areas, or people who are doing things that are vital to our country. It could be somebody working in the park service who gets some sort of adjustment for their student loans because of that kind of service to the country. So those are some of the ideas that I have. And it really worries me, because what's happening is, you probably have already read the reports that we have a declining birth rate in this country. One of the reasons I firmly believe is because young people are in such debt. They've got student loan debt, if they're a married couple, they might both have student loan debt. If they think about, they might buy a house, but chances are they're going to have a hard time doing that because of their student loan debt. And of course, buying a house is the American dream, and it also fuels our economy. And then, if they decide they want to have a child, they have to contend with the high cost of childcare. So imagine that. I mean, and I always told the story, and it sounds like forever ago now, but I put myself through college. It was relatively affordable, I worked two jobs, and then I got myself through. Didn't take out loans at that point, but then I started law school, and I found that working two jobs and going to law school was too much. And after my first year, I actually found my way to the student loan office and discovered that I could borrow money at the rate of 2% and pay it back starting one year after I graduated. And I had a contract, I had to pay it back, but I paid it back at $105 a month. I mean, I think I was paying until I was 40 or 45 years old, but it was a hundred and some dollars a month. And I fulfilled the terms of that obligation. That's the way people get ahead in this world, is by, you know, it's a hand up, it's not a handout. We need to do more of that.
Thank you for supporting the Equality Act. Do you have any updates on the Safe Schools Act, a bill to protect LGBT students from bullying in school?
I don't have an update on the Safe Schools Act, but I know that it's something that we are going to be returning our attention to in the Education and Labor Committee when we come back after the August break. I think it's a very important act. There is far too much bullying in schools generally, and we know from many, many studies that LGBT youth are particularly vulnerable. We also know that LGBT youth are at greater risk for suicide, self-harm, and that kind of thing. And I, you know, unfortunately, people might ask, why do we need all these acts? You know, I went to school, and they didn't have all these protections built in. We're in a different world now, quite honestly. Social media, the internet, has made the bullying problem much worse than it ever used to be. When I was in junior high and high school, the worst that happened was somebody passed nasty notes about you, and by the end of the class period, that was the end of that, and you went on your way, and your feelings might be hurt. But it wasn't the kind of thing that we see now, where students are actually being victimized across a broad range of social media. So I think we have to pass that act.
Can we stop the flow of taxpayer funds to charter schools that are not held to the same transparency of public schools?
You know, we've spent a lot of time in education labor also talking about charter schools. I think that some charter schools are appropriate and justified. We have far too many of them, and they are far too big a drain on our public school system, because first and foremost, I am a big believer in the public school education. I always went to public schools, my children went to public schools, and I believe that every person, every child in this country should be able to receive a quality public school education regardless of where they live, or who their parents are, or how much money their parents have in their bank account. But my big concern is what I hear from school administrators around the Lehigh Valley, which is that their bill to the charter schools is preventing them from providing necessary, essential teaching and other services to people right there in the public school system. So there has to be some sort of control on the charter schools and the money that is flowing their way.
What discussions are taking place regarding standardized testing in public schools, and will there be any reduction?
Well, as you probably know, most public schools are governed at the state level. But, you know, I hear a lot from teachers, we've got a couple of teachers in the audience who I know, I do hear a lot from teachers about the unfortunate teaching for the test. And, you know, I don't know whether we're going to do something about standardized testing. I would like to see teachers teach the way they used to be able to teach. I think that, you know, the numbers of people going into the teaching profession is dropping, which is sad. And a lot of that, I think, is because it's probably not as gratifying a profession as it used to be when you're teaching for the test, as opposed to teaching a subject that you're really passionate about, and that you care about, and that you know a lot about. And I have to say, my children's second grade teacher is in the front row with the Girl Scouts here, and I'm looking at her as, and she was a big part of the reason that my kids got such a good start in public school.
My healthcare premiums seem to keep going up every year. What are Democrats doing to bring them down?
So one of the bills that I was successful in passing, and it received a great deal of bipartisan support, I was very excited, it was the most Republican votes on any of the bills, or on any of the amendments to our recent bill to protect the Affordable Care Act from being taken away from us. And it had to do with making sure that no executive action could be taken that would have the effect of raising premiums. Now, having said, and as I said, widespread support, lots of people on both sides of the aisle voted for it, and it passed. But, listen, the Affordable Care Act was a start. It's by no means perfect, and I think that we absolutely have to get healthcare premiums under control for people. I'm not necessarily in favor of getting rid of all private health insurance. This district has a lot of people who enjoy excellent healthcare coverage. If you work for one of the hospitals, of course, we have great hospitals in this area, if you work for a major corporation, chances are, you've got good health insurance. But the other half, let's call it 50%, of the people in this district, don't have adequate health insurance, are paying a fortune for insurance that has a very high deductible. They essentially buy it so they have it for catastrophic coverage, but they're not using it for the types of things that we used to be able to use our health insurance for because of the amount of co-pays and specifically the deductibles. So we have, we've got to keep working on this problem and improve this act. Getting rid of the individual mandates, I believe, was a bad idea. I think it drove up the cost of health insurance, and we've got to get back to equalizing health insurance in this country.
What do you think the effect of the President's tariff is on Lehigh businesses and consumers?
It's not just a matter of what I think, it's a matter of what I've been told by manufacturers across the district. I have been told, number one, I've been told that they would like some certainty. That's their number one complaint, is that every day, things change, and they don't know what they are preparing for. I have met with some companies that have said, okay, we can deal with it, but let us know what it's going to be, and then let us create our business plan accordingly. So that's number one. But number two, I've been told, we're going to have to raise our prices, or we've already raised our prices, and we're going to have no choice but to pass it on to the consumer. And, you know, that's a fact of the matter. Studies are showing that people are going to pay anywhere from $750 to $1,000 a year more for ordinary consumer goods as a result of these tariffs. And I can't fail to mention the farmers. I've met with a number of farmers in our area. They are also very, very concerned. They are losing markets because of tariffs. And I'm a big believer in farming. I think, you know, I don't want our food outsourced to other countries. I want our food to be grown here. I think it's a matter of security, I think it's a matter of help and supporting farmers, and I don't want to see them hurt by it. So I'm very worried about our current trade situation. I don't think there is a well-thought-out strategy for how we are going to maneuver. The fact of the matter is, China's here to stay. We have to deal with China. And I'm not suggesting that, you know, I was often asked, what's the one thing I agree with the President on, or if, you know, what do I agree with the President on? And I've always said, I thought that his intent in creating a made-in-the-U.S.A. economy was a good one. But I don't see that happening. I think what's happening is that we're doing exactly the opposite. We're going to have people buying their products from other countries at a higher price, and farmers are going to lose their markets for soybeans and so forth they already have to South American countries because of these tariffs. This is not a way, you cannot create trade policy by tweet.
Do you think we need more gun laws, or should we enforce what we have?
Both. I think that we have to enforce what we have, first and foremost. I think closing the Charleston loophole would be a really good start, if you're going to have background checks, make them meaningful, make them for longer than three days. I'm not talking about something extraordinary, I'm just talking about something reasonable, and make sure the results of that background check have come before somebody is permitted to be already done. You know, but I don't think there are any easy answers on this subject. You know, there are lots, there's lots of information out there that suggests that some of the things that have been proposed in the area of gun regulation wouldn't have done anything to stop the recent mass shootings, or the mass shootings that we've seen over the last, and that may be true. I am not an expert in this field, but as I said before, we have gun violence that's not just mass shootings. I don't see any reason why somebody who is a domestic abuser should be permitted to have a gun.
Will you support stiffer penalties for firearm-related crimes?
If the penalties are on the books, they need to be enforced, and depending on what the crime is, without any specificity in that question, I can't say whether I would support stiffer penalties. But certainly, I think that laws are on the books to be enforced. I'm a big believer in law and order and following the rules.
How can the House leverage the Business Roundtable decision to break from CEO focus on shareholders to affect income inequality?
Can you read the question one more time?
Yeah. How can the House leverage the Business Roundtable decision to break from the CEO focus on shareholders to affect income inequality?
I'm not sure I understand the question. I do believe, and so I'm going to answer the question that I think is implicit in that question, and that is, the vast disparity between what CEOs earn and what workers earn, and the multiplier effect of people who are making millions of dollars have huge golden parachutes when a company merges with another company, and their workers are not being paid enough. I think that's, I think that equalizing income, and I'm not suggesting that everybody has to make the same amount of money, and I'm just saying that when we have CEOs who are literally making millions of dollars a year, and they've got people who are living paycheck to paycheck or got people who are living paycheck to paycheck, or perhaps not even, perhaps working a second job to get by, that's unconscionable.
Thank you.[1151.23][1151.23][applause] I am concerned with the overreach of religion into government. Project Blitz, the Johnson Amendment, evils being rained down on the LGBT community. Where do you stand on the wall of separation between religion and government?
I believe that it is a wall that must be upheld. It's a law that's embedded in our Constitution. I think that everyone should be permitted to practice their faith, their religion, in any way that they choose to, but that it has no business in the halls of government.[1191.41][1191.41][applause] And out of this act, that was really one of the primary reasons that this country was founded, and I think we have to remember that.[1205.33][1205.33][applause]
The Department of Education has a loan forgiveness program that has a notoriously low forgiveness rate. How can this be fixed?
Well, that's one of the issues that I was talking about before in terms of the student loan debt problem. Very few, unfortunately, have, I believe, a Department of Education that's currently being run without belief, without a belief in public school education, and without a belief, without a belief in helping people attain their highest, best level of education at an affordable price. And there, I, I addressed before what I believe is necessary in the area of loan forgiveness. We have got to be in, in a position where we help people get through school, and then if they return, if they provide a service, an essential service to this country, we have to be ready to help them with their student loans.
What is Congress doing to protect women's healthcare?
I, I am part of the Women's Health Caucus. I recently joined a newly formed caucus called the Black Maternal Health Caucus, because we know that women of color, particularly when in, in their maternity care, receive lesser, lesser care than, than white women. So we, I, I think that we absolutely, I, I disagree with the administration's recent position on Title X with regard to Planned Parenthood. I think that Planned Parenthood is an organization that deserves federal funding for the vital services that it provides. Let me just say, let me just say that, in case you aren't aware of this, Planned Parenthood and other clinics of their type do not receive federal funds for abortions. So whatever your personal feeling is about abortion, which again, I believe is, is something that should not be dictated by religion, I think that it, that's an issue between, I think all reproductive health issues should be between a woman and her, her healthcare provider, and, perhaps, perhaps a partner. But, you know, the, the services that these clinics provide are primarily to low-income people, to, to a lot of students. They provide cancer screenings, they provide STD screenings and treatment, they provide birth control, and these are vital healthcare services that we have to support, I believe.[1388.63][1388.63][applause]
What can be done for couples who want to have children but are not covered under the Family Medical Leave Act?
Well, that's a good question. The Family and Medical Leave Act provides 12 weeks of leave, not necessarily paid, to people who are in the workplace, and, and it only applies to employers with 50 or more employees, the last I checked. So if you want to have a child and you're not covered by FMLA, unfortunately, I don't think that there's a whole lot, you know, that, that is done. And I'm not sure that there's anything that the federal government can get involved in that, that helps, other than some sort of mandatory parental leave, which I think it would be a good start for, for both mothers and fathers.[1449.63][1449.63][applause]
Access to mental health care is a crisis in our country. Are you concerned that people are not getting the help they need?
Yes, I am. And that is for every segment of society. We know that mental health care is treated, for those of us with good health insurance, we know that mental health care is treated differently than physical health care. The reimbursement rates through almost every insurance company are lower than they are for physical health. And yet, we know that mental health is at the crisis, at a crisis point in this country. We've got veterans with severe mental health issues, we've got soaring rates of suicide among a, a number of different segments of our population, veterans, white men over 60, which isn't something you would expect, and, and younger people as well. And so I really believe that people should be able to buy into improved medical, excuse me, mental health insurance coverage, and that we actually should pass a law that, that requires insurance companies to treat mental health the same way that they treat physical health.[1526.63][1526.63][applause] I'm also, I'm also a believer in baseline mental health care screenings at a fairly young age. We require students to get vaccinations, we require students to go see a dentist when they enter school. I don't think that there's anything inappropriate about doing baseline mental health screenings on students, to, to try to detect problems that they may be having that are going unnoticed, or that simply haven't been treated.[1559.53][1559.53][applause]
So this is the last question, and if your question hasn't been asked, the Congresswoman's staff will get back to you, or if you have questions as you go out, please feel free to write them down again, and she, they will get back to you. So the last question is, you have not spoken about human rights in Kashmir.
Kashmir.
Kashmir, but most Congress has spoken, and eight million people have been besieged.
Okay, we are talking about Kashmir?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I actually am very much aware of the situation in Kashmir. It is an unfortunate situation for those people who are not aware, is it eight million you said?
Eight million.
Eight, eight million primarily Muslims, residents of Kashmir who are stuck between Pakistan and India, have been essentially imprisoned in their own homes, services have been cut off, they have no internet, they have no telephone, they're not being provided with food, is my understanding. And it's something that I have taken up with the, I'm also on the Foreign Affairs Committee, I don't know if that was mentioned, but that will be addressed as soon as we get back to Washington. I am actually scheduled tomorrow night to have dinner with the Prime Minister of Free --
Congresswoman.
Yes, yes, to discuss the situation. It's a very troubling situation. I'm actually very upset that it's not receiving more media attention.
My mother, I was born, my mother, she was born four days.
Is she one of the people affected?
She's one of the people, my brother has been incarcerated, it was taken 22 days ago. I was shot myself, two on my face, one on my back, 22 years ago. So the reason that, or Alan Schiff, he's called, I don't like, he's, you know, I was five, 77, I'm a Congressman, he did speak about, I did, made a non-convincing, a couple of Congressmen.
I actually, because of this dinner that I'm supposed to have tomorrow night, it's actually, I'll be on my way back to Washington, and I have scheduled, they scheduled stop to meet with him, and I was planning to make a statement after that. But it's a very troubling situation, and is, is, there are a lot of troubling situations around the world, and an awful lot of people are being affected, and we're, we are hearing very, very little about it. An hour really goes fast, laser during the hot state. I want to thank you all for coming. I, as, as Dr. Bieber said, if you ask a question that hasn't been answered, we will be gathering them, I will have input into the answers that you receive, you will be contacted directly with a response, I can't guarantee it will be this week, but it will be as soon as we pass the campaign. I started by saying thank you all for coming, because I think it's so important to our democracy. I really do believe in the concept of a democracy, and I, I, I want to see us get back to civilized discourse. This was a very civilized meeting. I'm happy to talk to any or all of you. My staff always loves it when I say that, except because they get to stick around for a really long time while I talk to people. But, but I consider it an honor and a privilege to be your representative in Congress, and I thank you for the trust that you have placed in me, and, and I hope, whether you voted for me or you didn't, that you feel that you are being representative, represented, and that I am listening to you. Thank you.[1789.83][1789.83][applause]